I've been nominated to lead the meeting. The mayor is running a little late. Once she gets here, we'll let her go ahead and lead it. But we want to get started with our second annual town hall meeting. And just going to be kind of discussion this evening. This is a follow-up to last year's meeting where we had numerous items that were brought to our attention that the citizens of Fulton would like to see done. We hope that we have, I know we have at least looked at every one of those items that were brought up last year, and we have, to this point, done our best to at least begin to address those. We've gotten into some code enforcement issues. We're looking at strategic planning. We have, like I said, I think we've addressed all those issues. But this is going to be more of a discussion, and we'd like to go ahead and get started.
Somebody probably back there. Yeah, how much?
And so we'll go ahead and get started, and we'll let the mayor lead this now.
No, you go ahead. You're doing a good job.
We just open it up to the floor, and we'll kind of take questions, and we'll, we don't have, we don't have a set agenda this evening, but we'll take questions from the audience. Anybody that would like to start, and go right ahead.
I'll start.
Thank you.
I'm Bobby Caldwell. We do some rental properties. We have investors that we work with. I am not opposed in any way to inspecting each property. I don't like the $50 per unit. I don't think that's fair. Any of our properties are open for anybody at any time to walk through, anytime. I don't, or I wouldn't oppose an inspection fee, $25 per inspection. If you have a lease, whether it's a six-month lease, or 12 months, or two months, two years, whatever it is, at the end of that lease, when the people move out, if it's six months, spend another $25 and have it re-inspected. That don't mind me. I oppose that whatsoever. But I don't think the $50 is, I don't think it's fair.
Do you keep your properties up? And how many properties do you own?
I own three.
Or manage them.
But I think we manage somewhere in the third of those.
Okay.
And the city is welcoming any of them at any time. You know, give me notice so I can rent or no, I'm more happy letting our properties. We do keep them up. We do what needs to be done at any time.
I think I have an answer for you, buddy.
Okay.
And hopefully some other landlords here. The question of the $50 per unit, per year fee, that was discussed as well in length last night in the commission meeting, and we've taken it further. And today, we've been concerned that, we being the department heads and Commissioner Bellegarde was in there. And what we're going to do, Mike, correct me if I say something wrong, we're going to leave the ordinance as is, or as proposed, but we're going to do away with the $50 per unit fee for a year, so we can create a database, as well as require all property, rental property owners, to at no charge, get a permit for each unit.
Okay.
So that we can inspect those properties as needed, or, you know, when the time comes up. And also, if there is a violation for that particular unit, then there'll be a process that that unit will go through with that landlord, as far as a notice and a citation after, you know, we're not here to punish. Our goal is to resolve and make all properties safe and habitable for everybody, to upgrade all rental property. Plus, find out how many rental properties are in the city of Fulton. We don't have any idea, we have no way of collecting that, but by issuing permits at no charge, one will be able to get, find out what we've got. Now, if someone refuses to get a permit, and we get a complaint or whatever, and go to this unit that's not on file, then that individual landlord will be in violation of the ordinance, and we'll, you know, go through another process. But as far as the $50 per unit fee that was proposed in the beginning, we're not going to do that. We're going to see, again, we're going to take 12 months and see how the cost is. Like I said, we're welcoming your properties at any time.
Yes, sir.
Other properties, we're not welcoming at any time.
I understand.
So what's, you know, we're trying to do something fair for all of them.
I'm still not opposed to an inspection fee.
Well, it might get...
And that's more than fair.
It may get to that next year.
Maybe in a year, after we get a database together and know what we're dealing with a little bit better, that might very well be the possibility. But let's give it time, all of us get organized, see where we are, and then reevaluate as far as what we're hoping.
Well, and it could be, you know, when we come to do change renters, and we come and do a free inspection, and there's a lot of violations, and we have to come back, and come back, there probably would be a fee for the return inspection fee.
Well...
So that's, we think that's fair and equitable, and hopefully, you know, given time, we can, and openly communicate all this stuff, we can work together and upgrade our properties.
We satisfied you?
There were numerous other citizens last night at the commission meeting, and I think it was across the board with the commission, Mr. Caldwell, that we were, that something, the ordinance has a lot of teeth, and the ordinance is excellent, we've decided. However, with the fee, we were all questioning the fee at this point, so I think it'll be working out well.
How do you create the database voluntary enlistment of landlords?
The ordinance will, it's not necessarily voluntary, but due to, by ordinance, it'll be mandatory, but we hope it'll, it should be mandatory.
People, tell us, you know, if you've got all these units, tell us. Brains is, let us know where they are, so we can build this database.
We know most, or, we know the properties that the utilities are put in the renter's name, for sure. But we don't know for sure all the properties that are kept in one person's name, such as the landlord owns 15 units. We might not know of them, other than word of mouth.
Can you not tell by your utility that one person has 15 addresses and one name?
If they've got utilities on in that house.
Yeah.
Be surprised, some of these houses don't have utilities.
Well, I know, I've gotten called from Helen and say, "Do you know someone's, oh, someone's, oh?" And I say, "Yes." And she said, "Well, why have they not paid their $50 license fee?" And I say, "Well, you know, I don't know, but I'll tell them." And somehow, they're not getting...
That's, that's another thing, it's a good point. Now, every February, it's printed in the paper that your business license is due, one time, in a weekly newspaper. It's put on the website, it's put on the utility bills. What we're trying to attempt now is with a new, this is a different database that we're creating, but when taxes are generated next year, on that tax bill is going to be, your business license is due January 1. If it's not due by Jan, if it's not paid by February 1, there'll be a penalty or, you know, something that, so it gets in the hands...
Of absentee owners.
Of absentee, yeah, at least the taxpayer.
Okay, and I do have another question about that. Helen Lee wanted me to buy a second business license for rental properties. I pay a business license for real estate. Real estate and rental property are the same thing.
I don't have an answer, but...
It's a fine one. Go ahead.
She needs a fine on it, so do you have...
And that's something we needed to find.
We addressed that.
We have several, some have, have multiple licenses. Some are under an umbrella.
Mm-hmm.
So that...
We talked about that last... I think the difference is, you know, I sell real estate, and I manage a few rentals, and I've paid one license fee. You sell real estate, but didn't see the renters. Your rental management is vetting outside of the city limits.
Right.
So would that be the reason?
Yeah.
Okay. But that is, that is...
That's not the only time it's my fault.
No, it's not the only time. Jeff?
Mr. Campbell?
Well, this is a great opportunity for me to take a contrarian view. I have acquired and torn down nine properties in the city of Fulton, one commercial building in the city of Fulton, and two houses in the city of South Fulton. Now, out of all my experiences, I can tell you what it cost me to acquire those properties, what it cost me to have those properties torn down, and I can tell you, in 50% of the cases, those properties were owned by absentee owners. People who were children, grandchildren, or nieces and nephews of former Fultonians, or people who, for opportunistic reasons, bought cheap real estate here and rented, okay? People who don't live in our community, don't care, and they don't invest, they want to extract market rents, and they want to spend as little as possible on their rentals. So maybe there's another way to go about this, and I don't have the grandest ideas, but I would encourage, from a code enforcement perspective, whether it be tracked by utilities, whether it be whatever reason, we have got to establish standards in this community to clean up some of these neighborhoods, particularly for those who don't live in our community, who don't care, don't see the property, and don't know what kind of shape it's in. So I'm on code enforcement, so I'll start with that. I've got several things on my list, but I'll try to be quick. In terms of tear downs, I'm here tonight to offer the city of Fulton an incentive. I don't know what you're building in the budget, I don't know what you have in the budget for next year, but I would hope that you are thinking about budgeting for at least five tear downs a year, every year, for the next five years anyway.
At least a year.
Okay. So if the city of Fulton will condemn for your new code enforcement officer and tear down, tear down at least five properties next year, for every property, for six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, for the next five, I'll match a 50 cents on the dollar, if you will condemn them and tear them down. So let me be clear about this. If you tear down five properties, condemn them and tear them down, on property number six that you condemn, if your estimate for tear down is $4,000, Jeff Campbell will write you a check for $2,000 to match the city's $2,000. That, folks, is called an incentive plan, and that is to incent action, and to incent cleaning up. Now, I'm talking about condemnable problems that are nothing but hazards for drugs, and crime, and everything else, to get them out of these neighborhoods. And I'm trying to, as a citizen, well, not technically a citizen, as a property owner, I'm trying to help get them. So that's, that's number one. Number two, this may be a crazy thought, but something to think about, South Fulton has as big or bigger problem than the city of Fulton does. You can acquire a used, good-used trackhoe for $40,000. So if the city of South Fulton were to put in 20, and you put in 20, and buy a used backhoe, in a very short time, about eight to 10 tear downs, you pay for that, that trackhoe, and then all the rest of the tear downs are free. Not free, but it's been paid for. So it's something to think about, because I promise you, between South Fulton and Fulton, we've got years of tear downs to do. And I know, because I've paid Tim Limmons, I've paid Stanley Gammons, and I know that a small house is $2,500 to $3,000, a large house is $3,000 to $4,000. So you're talking about at least $4,000 a pop to tear these houses down, 10 tear downs, and your trackhoe's paid for. So just something to think about. In terms of the code enforcement officer, I applaud the decision by the commission and the mayor. We waited for a year and a half, maybe two years, for all the old ordinances to be cleaned up. We're just about there. We had this new code enforcement officer, so I hope now we can get serious about citing people for cars parked in front doors, garbage cans on the front porch, upholster furniture on the, on the, on the exterior of the home. And I look forward to driving through town and seeing those little, but little, reduced. It's not going to happen overnight. It took years to get this condition, it may take years to get it back, but we've got to have citations, warnings, citations, fines, and teeth in it to make it happen. And so whoever the code enforcement officer's under, I hope they'll, I hope they have a hard period, I'll put it that way. The next item on my agenda, since I have a public forum here, I just want to throw out that somewhere around Main Course, we will start concept design of the new South Fulton Park project, which will be four acres south of this building. And so if any of you have any ideas, inputs, thoughts, that you'd like to see incorporated into that new park, while it's being built for the city of South Fulton, it's for the citizens between cities. So I'd love to get input and ideas for anything creative, anything for recreation, anything for kids, anything for social events, or anything else that governs that park project. So I'll just leave that there. The next, the last item I've got is the old Women's Club building. I have not had a chance to bring it up in detail, and I don't want to get into detail in a public forum, but I will just tell you that we have an opportunity for a scalable jobs project that would produce 100 jobs a year. Now, these are not manufacturing jobs, and I really want to meet in close session with the mayor and the city commission, but what I'm so concerned about is I leave Thursday, I'll be gone for two weeks, and I'm afraid you'll be closing up your budget process. And it's hard to find money for the city when it's not budgeted. But the only thing I can, I can tell you now in public, and the reason I want to get this out there, is that project, we'd like to see central heat and air in the Women's Club building, and I, and I don't know what the estimates are going to be, but whatever those estimates are, if you would earmark that as a potential budget request, and then let me get with you individually, or in a closed session, to explain this project in more detail, but I'm just afraid by the time I get back, it may be too late. And the last item I've got is really a question, it was from last year's town hall. There was discussion, a lot of discussion about improving the looks of the town and all that, and I thought there was serious discussion about budgeting for new entrance signs in the town, and I just wondered where we were on that, anything done on that, or is there anything going to be put in this year's budget for that?
I think that will come, are you talking about where the train signs are?
Yeah.
They'll probably come under tourism. And they pay for those lights signs, Jeff?
Okay.
I mean, somebody needs to come up with, find something, something, and present it to tourism, and I'm sure they'll take care of it.
Okay.
You know, I don't know, you know...
They've begun the groundwork at the lighting on Park Road.
Okay.
They've begun the groundwork to put up the lights.
I saw it, and that's why I asked a question about the entrance, new entrance.
Yeah, yeah. But we need, we need something to light the...
I'll take the tourism.
Okay, thank you.
Goddamn, watch it. I've been a landlord in this town for 50 years, and I ain't never had a complaint from a responsible renter, yet. I won't.
Repeat that again.
You know, I'm one of them, I'm one of the responsible renters.
You haven't had a complaint from a responsible renter in all those years? That's got landlords with...
I might have asked them, but some of you are responsible, and they wouldn't pay the rent.
(laughing).
I bet a lot of y'all had a favor about getting the landlords more responsible. I don't know a landlord that ain't responsible.
But you had to look very hard.
I think y'all don't have an understanding of a landlord and rental business if you ain't ever done it. I think, and this whole thing about the code enforcement law, I'm not against it, at all. But all this, all that $50, though, is to raise money for the city. Yeah. A sacrilegious way in the world to raise that same money would be every time you turn a new water beer on, start to kick it off. Same money, spread it out, instead of, that landlord's had to pay it off. And I think that, I know y'all disagree with this, and think, oh, you ain't never done it, and you probably have never even rented yet, paid it. And I've done both. I've been waiting on the rent, I've rented out and seen it. We've got business buildings in Martin that we rent. Sometimes we get paid, sometimes we don't, sometimes we have to pay water beer, sometimes we have to pay pound food. And I think I've done my part as a landlord to add to the amount that I run rate. I've been good to Martin. You can't, what, I've got 22 in this town right now, and you'll not find one who won't say that I have been good to them.
Well, Mr. Moss...
Just maybe that.
Mr. Moss, we appreciate that, and the thing is, is, you know...
I know.
We're not targeting people, but, you know, if you keep your properties up, we're not targeting you by any means. We're just trying to, trying to make sure that all our landlords, like yourself, keep their properties up to a good code, you know, where our city looks a little bit better.
I can't, except my suggestion of funding on adding a $50, so I knew what was going on in this, in this amendment.
Are all the, in your apartments...
Better come to you back, than I go there and not.
Are all the apartments that you have, are their utilities in your name, or in their name?
I got a problem, I can't hear you.
Are all the...
80% of my unit in the defense of the United States.
Okay, yeah.
Well, we appreciate that, Mr. Moss. Can you hear me?
Can you hear him?
All right, come here.
What, come here.
That's the only way I can do it.
Mike, can you hear me when I'm talking to you now?
No.
Okay, are all your apartments, are the utilities in the renters' names, or are they in your name?
The questionable ones that would not pay the water bill that I get, it's you that I'm running about, just like this last one. Had a question, they live without paying rent, I paid $180 water bill to the city that they had lost.
I just wanted to know if the utilities...
Most of them, they've got it in their own name.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
I got your concern written down, I'll tell you. I have your, your suggestion written down.
Okay.
Take under advisement.
All right. I appreciate it.
Appreciate your time, Mr. Moss.
A little more, I just thought, I'm sorry, but as I was researching properties to tear down, another thing that might help you in identifying all the landlords is if you work with Pete Orpyn's office and PBA, you'll see repeat names all across the tax rolls, and you're obviously renters.
I can't stand to find absentee owner.
Good.
My son owns several pieces of rentals here, and Melinda is our rental agent, and he comes out every year and works on whatever, anything needs. He takes care of it. He's re-roofed them, he's put new flooring in them, he's done a whole lot. So being an absentee owner doesn't mean that he just lets them, you know, run down. What I'd like to suggest to you is, you know, your business license is very, very, very recent, very low. Instead of charging per unit, charge a bigger business license, and make up the amount of money that you need. Our business licenses in California are like $150 per, you know, that's triple what you're paying here. So that might be a way of getting the income or revenue you need for your...
Thank you, thank you. Could I have your name, please?
Kay Meliacho.
Thank you.
I probably will misspell it, Kay.
I wanted to just spell it correctly.
K-L-I-A-C-C-I-O.
Thank you.
Richard Pickle, I want to know if y'all gonna fire the dog catcher?
No, I think not.
Well, I, I've got the same dog that come to my house every month, 2:30, 3:00 in the morning, trying to kill my cat, and he has not been picked up, white dog, brown spots. I want to know why, I want to know why dogs, and I lose all of his weight. People are keeping them on chain, or keeping them in pools, why y'all letting this happen? This probably case being $10,000 on part-time dog catcher?
No, sir. We have needs of picking up dogs.
Who's picking them up?
But we have our police officers.
They're a little bit in the job.
Okay, if you would come by our office and give me the information that you need to have those dogs picked up.
I called out their police office, and don't even get nobody down, since they got that, uh...
Dispatch?
Dispatch, yeah. Nobody even answers the telephone.
This is a problem we've had for years, and I'm not going to sit here and say that we still don't have the problem. In my opinion, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the commission, or the mayor, or the city, or the city manager. You know, I've been a commissioner since 2008, and it's something that we've dealt with for years, you know, ever since I've been on it, and, and I'm not convinced, and no, no offense to our, our police officers, or anything to that effect, there are, we still have, we still have animal issues, in my opinion, and, you know, I'd love to see you come and, and speak with Cub, city manager, talk to Terry, see what we can do about this incident, you know, but I do, I do not think personally that you have an isolated incident, and I, and I'm not going to sit up here and say that...
You know, taking a dog, if I had a dog, if I was a wicked dog, we were going to make it to the main door, and we'd pick it up.
You're exactly right, and I, like I said, it's not a, it's something that is, that, you know, in my opinion, it's a problem we've had for years and years and years, that there's not been, we've not been able to address it. You know, we hired a code enforcement officer to help with some of that, and then we ended up having to move him up to, to a police officer status, you know, we don't, you know...
Money's not there.
I'm not going to insult your intelligence and say that, you know, we're, we're up here, we're doing something about it. It's, it is a constant problem, a constant issue. You know, we built, you know, a few years ago, we built the, the pound, or the, give me the shelter out there on Park Road, and it's, it has been utilized, it is being utilized. We're trying to, you know, move, move animals out of the town via, via rescue services and things like that, but, you know, I live on, I live on the other, other side. You live over, you live with Ms. Meyer, right?
No, I live over these four, Jackson Street.
Jackson Street, well...
Probably have two dogs coming from South Fulton over there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's another problem.
Oh, yeah.
And then they go, they'll go back.
They know where that line is.
And see, I live a few, I live a few streets over from you, and I, I'm, you know, there are, I have some issues as well.
I have issues here, and Bill has issues too.
Um, it's something we've addressed, but at this point, I, we don't have a good answer. We'll do our best.
I'm not sure you, but we do, if law courts pick them up, this is vowing for curbs.
Curbs.
It's actually a great effort to be able to use twice its animals in homes, away from the community, and actually actually pick them back and repick them up. So the law courts are picking them up, but it isn't, it's a mall, and it's what happens in spring of the year. A lot of folks from other counties want to drop the dogs and animals off into their towns, that they don't find a home for them, so they're really besting as we can.
And it's intermittent, too, so...
I don't know, I don't know, it's for the ones that I need, the same dog.
What kind of dog?
Brown dog, brown spots.
White dog?
I heard that.
That's the dog that, that...
Well, if the vice has had a lot, I can tell you, the city of Fulton is built a pound, but the police officers in Fulton are picking them up. If you live in South Fulton, they just resolved their problem, and they bought live traps and said, "If you've got an animal problem, come to City Dog Checkout. A lot of trap, catch yourself, and dispose the animal yourself." So it's not what you had.
A dog?
Dog or cat.
They have a dog catcher.
Saying I wasn't blessed, commissioner.
(laughing). They can get a dog catcher near.
Is it a pretty long hair dog?
Long hair dog.
That's the keg dog.
They call him the young dog.
The keg dog. We can't catch it, they can't catch it.
Can't catch it.
Nope, they can't, no.
Anybody have anything else?
I want to go back and address the questions, Jeff. Of course, the incentive is great, that sounds good. We do have money in the budget. Government demolition is a whole lot longer process than individual buying a house from an individual, or so on and so forth. We've got one in the, in the trigger, so to speak, once we get a deed signed, and we've got properties earmarked that we're, you know, as soon, we can't just go in and demo a house and then suffer the consequences if we don't do it properly. and then suck the consequences if we don't do it properly. But, we do have that in our plan, we were talking this morning. I think we have forty-two properties in the city that would probably meet the criteria. By the time we get the forty-second torn down, we'll probably have an additional fifteen, probably. But, that is on our.
You're talking about the condemnation process?
Yes, yes.
But there's interesting points come out of this kind of discussion, and that is, it causes us to really take a new look at the process. And there are some ways that we could do one thing instead of another and shorten the timeframe. It does cause us to look at that process. And I'm going to be interested in looking at the whole process myself, Jeff. I appreciate you bringing it up, because where there's a will, there's a way. And I'm not suggesting that we violate any law or any property right of any sort. But if there are some things that we can do in lieu of something else, then we should be taking advantage of. We do have forty-two, as Cub says.
Sweet demo.
At least forty-two, that's it. And we need to speed it up.
I'm not an attorney, but it ought to be easier to be with an abandoned home than it is with one that is actively unmanaged and sometimes rented. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, I do.
I can name you several around town, but.
Particularly. But you have to have vehicles in place to do that. That's why we've been so long getting a code enforcement officer in place, because we weren't ready. We didn't have the means of tracking, we didn't have the ordinance that we could go to and say, landowner or homeowner, whatever, you're in violation of this code. We didn't have those codes. We couldn't, then, if we did, we did not have a fee structure of penalties. And that's what we've been working on diligently since last June, last May when we started these meetings. And it should, this time next year, you ought to see a vast improvement or accelerated pace.
And if they're condemned, but if they're condemned, it's a little easier as well.
Worst-case scenario, what is the longest time that condemnation process takes?
I don't think there is, I don't think there's an answer.
We've had some almost, not much, but I know we've got some that are in the process for that.
We started one last year Friday, and now it's been a much time. And we're still, we're still in the process of working on it. Came down to the divorce issue with one of them signing to get a call up.
But we are working very diligently on that. That's the things that you see. You go down several streets where houses are being torn down, and you notice an improvement in the maintenance. There was the ones that had.
And the ones that are torn down, you have to be very careful where you take the house, especially if it's square and dumping, and it stays protected, I believe.
That leads into the ordinances, the update of the ordinances that you mentioned. And we've got fifty chapters in our ordinance book. We've been through ten. And when you make changes and everything, then you've got to have them read up twice, you know, in public forum, and then, so it's a process. And, but we're targeting the chapters mainly right now for code enforcement. And then, kind of jumping around, but exercising, you know, going through. We have our city attorney in the meetings, and it's quite lengthy. And then, we're trying to pare down our ordinance book from this thick to, you know, half or so. So, it can be in layman's terms, everybody understands either black or white. And if it was good in nineteen thirteen, it doesn't apply to force drawn buggies today, so let's get rid of that ordinance altogether. So, that's, we're in that process of doing that. The Women's Club building, I've been informed of that, and I've got some things moving. And then the entrance signs, that's been discussed as well. And those will probably be replaced, and we'll use two hundred and dollars to.
You would do twenty here, now this is starting the process.
Yeah, but, so, appreciate your comments.
I would say one more thing about the teardown, the condemnation process and tearing down these old buildings. I'm quite sure that we'll have a chapter in our strategic plan about the quality of property in our town, the appearance of property in our town. And perhaps that can be addressed in a little bit more aggressive way if we do it strategically. So, I'm hoping, Jeff, that we can, I'm sure we'll have something to say about that in the strategic plan.
I know anytime you turn your balls, it'll be a while.
But, if you're going to do it, it's going to be the right way. So, we don't have to redo it, redo it, redo it, then go back into courts and everything like that. So, that's why we're taking more time upfront, so once we get to a place, we can move on.
Yes, sir.
Tell us some of these properties, why not issue a building permit? If you issue a building permit, then it has to be inspected at the time the job is completed. I think you need it. There's a lot of work goes on out there. And quite frankly, when it's done, it needs to be pushed over. Get the code enforcement a book with some kind of codes and charge for a building permit to remodel or repair some of these places.
We have that.
We have that.
We do have that.
We have that.
Condemnation process. And that also leads to the condemnation process. And if we get to that point, it's a little easier than it is otherwise. So, you're on the right track, I think.
To have a, to need or issue a building permit, it has to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, a new structure, an addition to a structure, or you're changing the structure of the house by removing the low-bearing wall or such that nature.
I was a general contractor in Wisconsin for twenty years. To put a roof on a house, you've got to have a building permit.
I think we need to talk about some, we've got something to do. We may strive at the reading that we're going to do tonight, because the rental problem that was in there is going to adopt and that's going to go. We know where we need to leave, we just got, it's like we said, this whole year, we spent this whole year getting things in place and legal for, we didn't really have a way. We didn't, there wasn't anything that was said we had to have a permit for, you know, those type of things. So, you know, that's where we're at. We're getting, you know, Daniel's been doing a good bid this week on code enforcement. He wrote fourteen notices last weekend, Monday.
I got one.
Then, you know, he wrote fourteen in a couple days last weekend, and one day, on Monday this week, he wrote fourteen more plus citations. So, I mean, he's starting to get pretty good. It's just we had to get to where we needed to be from legal side before we could start.
And some of the vacant lots around town, city owns.
That's another issue.
What were they for sale?
Yes, yes. And we've got some that have already.
We'll be in for you tomorrow. We'll be in for you tomorrow.
Well, some of them have already been.
Purchased.
Designated.
Y'all did?
Masked workplace.
Masked workplace. And then some have been being mowed just so the town will look nice. Well, we're not, the town's not going to look as nice this year as it has in the years past, because we're going to stop mowing vacant lots that the city does not own. And then we're going to give them a notice, give them a citation, and go through the process. And after, if they don't, then we'll mow them and then we'll build them. So, bear with us, I mean, we're together, I think. You're thinking the same way we are, and any ideas, we're welcome, but.
Some of them.
And if you're interested in any of them, put a bid in.
Anything like that on.
No, I don't want.
Okay, I don't want anybody to, you know, some of them are very small, you know.
But we have compiled that list, so we don't mow them wrong.
I mean, we're going to, I mean, well, we've mowed some, but I mean, that's not.
Those aren't bad.
All bad, okay. Any other questions? I'm sorry, I lied, somebody told me five-thirty, and somebody hit on Facebook five-thirty, so.
All signs of shit.
I know, I need five o'clock, I need five o'clock. But then I start down five-thirty, and I'm like, oh, I got it wrong. But anyway.
I just have one brief other comment. I know a lot of times are hard, and I know that we have to make some hard cuts, but I would just say that as an owner, a police officer would be the one that laughs once. And I support with some of the issues we have in town and probably have in town, try to resist cutting a police officer position.
Amen.
Amen, thank you, Jeff.
Derek?
Thank you.
Thank you.
He can't look around, feel that smile.
You could finish bringing that in there, couldn't you? Does anybody have anything else? Well, we appreciate your coming, and I guess we should.